Judiciary and Ethics Committee, can we get a roll call, please?
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizbarsky. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Looking for the approval of minutes of the meeting on February fourteenth, 2019. We got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on that? No? Okay, that's done. A report and recommendation, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Please take that over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As counsel knows, last week they had received a letter from Christie's Restaurant looking to add an additional liquor license, so that's why it's before the committee tonight. And as is the custom, there aren't any open liquor licenses, so any new liquor licenses have to be, a new license has to be opened, and then that opening is then ultimately approved by the Liquor Commissioner, which is the mayor for any licenses. There was three possible licenses that could apply to this request, and I put those in the memo, but in talking to Mr. Frantzos, they're looking to get the Class RVG license, which was the license that we created a couple of years ago for restaurants in town, and not for restaurants that are selling like the just microwaved or pre-made meals, this is for full-service restaurants, and then that would allow them to also get a video gaming license. So, the proprietors here tonight, if there are any questions, otherwise, if counsel wants to move forward with this, I'll work on the ordinance to add an additional-
I'd like to make a motion.
Second. To approve the liquor license.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to issue a Class R liquor license for Christie's Restaurant.
RVG.
RV, excuse me. RVG.
Correct.
Class RVG, sorry.
Second there with that?
Second that.
Could we roll call, please? Any questions?
No, I'm good.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
All right, Chief?
Chief, was that Class RVG for Christie's?
That's correct.
And, okay, the second one's also.
Number two?
Thanks. Counsel also received another inquiry about a liquor license, this is for, this is kind of a two-part thing. One is Tuscany, that was in Georgetown, has closed down, so as is the custom, we need to be, we should be looking to reduce that Class R liquor license that they had, and the new business that's looking to move into their, the Pizza Kitchen, and the owners are here tonight, they're asking for a Class RVG liquor license. This would, of course, be subject to them passing the business licensing requirements and also passing a liquor background prior to that being submitted to the Liquor Commissioner. So, two parts of this tonight is to reduce Class R, and then the second would be to add a Class RVG, and as I mentioned, they're here, if you have any questions for them or what type of restaurant they're looking to open.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Messina, you have a question?
If you wouldn't mind, Chairman, could they spend a minute maybe at the podium just explaining kind of their concept and what they're looking to do?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lorian DeHart Delgado.
And I'm Rob Delgado.
I'm the sole owner of the Pizza Kitchen now. A little bit of our business plan that I managed to put together here for you guys tonight. Right now, we have two full-time employees, we're not open, but we're looking to serve the community, the world's best pizza, that my husband here has been making since 1987. We're looking to establish, you know, people to come in and dine and look for, you know, if they have any desire to have, you know, alcoholic beverages, to make that available, nothing to carry out, of course. We're looking forward to be family-oriented and, you know, quiet and respectful of the other businesses that we're close to, of course, and our market is everybody, because who doesn't love pizza? And we have six crusts, and, you know, let me let Rob tell you about that, because this is the guy that's going to be making them for everybody.
Yep, I've been making pizza since I was twelve, thirteen years old, so it's time to just make Wooddale happy and have pizza. I was in Addison for about five years in a place, and so I have a pretty good following already, and like, we started our Facebook page on Sunday, 200 hits, 200 likes by Monday morning, so we're going to be really successful in Wooddale.
Yeah, a lot of people are looking forward to us. Of course, we're looking to hopefully see you guys here, too. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
What are your plans for the interior?
No changes at this time.
Just a lot of paint.
Alderman Jacob.
You guys have deliveries as well, or?
So, I hope to. I am getting the quote on the insurance for that, because that's, you know, when you have your drivers and everything, there's figuring that out at this time, so, but yeah, we want to deliver, absolutely. Pizza to the people.
Pizza for the people, I like that. Alderman Catalano.
What kind of oven are you going to have? You're going to have a brick oven?
Yes, two.
Good.
Bigger grides.
All right.
Alderman Wesley?
Yeah. I'm a little confused now with all these liquor, so that liquor license that we gave us is for beer and wine, right?
Chief?
Or is full?
No, it's actually a full liquor license. The difference is, if it was just the Class M or the Class MR, you cannot, someone has to order, they have to order food with a glass of wine or a beer, so.
And in their case, this other liquor license is that, it says almost the same license.
The exact same license, yes.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
All right, I think we had a motion and a second. Do a roll call, please? Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
When are you looking open?
Lots of luck.
When are you looking open, they ask?
Marty.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Any items to be considered at future meetings? None being here, need a-
I'll make a motion, Chairman. Back it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Okay, get your coffee ready. You have not gone to the bathroom.
Take care, Gus.
Thank you.
Bye, Gus. Yeah.
Can allow a minute or two for those that want to leave, otherwise, you're going to have a very long night ahead of you.
Okay.
So I'm warning you. Thank you. Good luck, folks.
Bye, good luck, guys.
Okay.
They crashed and burned.
All right, so I'd like to call this Finance and Administration Committee meeting to order at 7:36. Please let the note taker note that the same people are present. First up, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any questions? Sir? Oh, I'm sorry. I actually want to step back a few. Note taker, please note that Alderman Art Woods has stepped in the building. If you hadn't caught that earlier. She had a minute already, okay. So, we had a motion, we had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Reports and recommendations. Buckle up, we're going to spend some time going through this bad boy. Our fiscal year 2020 budget, and I guess to start off, I will pass it off to our Finance Director, Brad Wilson, to kick it off, and then between him and I, we will dance you through the night, exchanging back and forth. Like to dance? Good. Well, don't fall asleep on the dance floor, please. We will take questions throughout, we'll go at a reasonable pace, and we'll see where it takes us. If it gets a little too late, we will stop, and we will take, we will partake in a part two at our next committee meeting, two weeks from now. Anybody have any questions before we start? All right, Director Wilson, please start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as he said, I'd like to welcome you all to the fiscal year 2020 budget presentation, Part One. So, the slides are included in the packet on Friday. We've kind of done this arrangement with the slide deck and going back and forth and interfacing with the different tabs of the budget the last few years, so it's a similar process that we've gone through. So, again, we do some overview items. This is kind of the accountant techie stuff. There's six different fund types, the general fund, which is the general fund, special revenue, which is revenues that are specifically restricted for a certain purpose, such as motor fuel tax, the tourism fund, narcotics forfeiture, et cetera, capital projects funds, which is the CIP by and large, which we covered, I believe, on January 10th, internal service fund, which is the SURF, which is the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund, enterprise funds, which is your metro parking lot sanitation fund, and water and sewer funds, and your trust and agency funds, which is the police pension fund and special service area funds.
Wait, can I stop you for a minute? The SURF fund, so I had a question on that, actually. Somebody mentioned to me, how long ago did we start that fund?
Three years ago? Three years ago, I would say? Yeah. I'll say three.
Thanks.
So, of the 15 total active funds that we budget for, nine have a proposed budgeted increase, six have a proposed budgeted decrease, over two of those six are cash flow positive. They're only a decrease based upon depreciation, which is a nine cash transaction, so on a cash basis, there's 11 positive and four negative, but from a pure accounting standpoint, it's nine and six. Capital spending, again, as we discussed on January 10th, the CIP, the city continues to move forward with a lot of projects, and we also, again, try to align them when and where possible for grants, alternative funding sources, and then also to line up, you know, underground work with above-ground work, so we're not tearing up a street that we did last year to put a new water main in, so trying to get some synergies that we can going forward. So, this is a process. Each department or fund, if there's no departments within the fund, has its own sheet within the slide deck. It also has its own tab in the budget binder itself. The expanded level sheets were applicable, green or red, that's been pointed out to me that the red is more of a pink, so, you know, black ink doesn't really show up on bright red paper, so-
The tab debate and the color debate.
Had to make some choices in there. So, we'll try to gain consensus on each section before moving on to eliminate flipping back and forth between the book as much as possible. So, we'll begin, next couple of slides, an overview of the entire budget, and then we'll go through, again, as presented, the binder on the slide deck, general fund, special revenue, et cetera, et cetera. As Chairman Messina said, tonight's February 28th, we'll get through as much as we can, or as much as, you know, everyone will tolerate, and then whatever's left, if anything, will be on the March 14th meeting, which is two Thursdays from now. So, budget overview for all funds, so this is everything from top to bottom. The FY19 budget for revenues, 34.6 million, projected to come in 32.3. Next year, the proposed budget, a little over 35.7 million total revenues. So, one of the things that drove the difference in the FY19 budget was the investment income in the police pension fund. That was about $2 million, give or take, swing between what they had budgeted and what they were expected to return, all based upon the unrealized gain and loss of the investments, when they marked the investments to market as per statute. You know, with the rising interest rates, the fixed income equities, the teeter totter between interest rates and valuation goes down, however, if they hold them to maturity, then they're not going to have that minus $2 million loss in there, so.
So, what you're saying is the fiscal year 2019 projected fund is going to be impacted by potentially fluctuations in the market?
Correct. About $2 million of that difference is-
So, there's no activity that would have been through the city of any sorts, but through the market, essentially?
By and large, correct, yeah. If that number were normalized, it would be virtually spot on.
Okay, so I want to make sure that people at home understand that. Thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, so going forward to the expenditure side, excluding transfers, budget was just under 36.5 million, projected to come in just under 33 million. That's kind of spread out over a different number of things. It's spread out over about 600,000 in salaries, 500,000 in contractual, 2.1 in capital, and then a few bits and pieces here and there through the other different expense categories, and then projected for next year is about 36.4 million, so actually, in total, what, about 80,000 less than fiscal 19, but still maintaining the same level of service overall for the city.
Can you take some time on that, please, to explain that? So, you're saying that our expenditures are down by 80,000 this year than prior year? Is that correct? So, if I'm looking at the 2019, or projected, and the 2019 budgeted, you say, yeah, we went from 36, and we're projected to finish our expenditures at 32? Is that correct? So, is that 4 million?
So, yeah, from the first bullet to the second bullet, it's about 3.4 million, correct, and that's what split up between salaries, contractual, about 2 million in capital, that wasn't spent, things of that nature, but budget year to budget year is the first bullet to the third bullet.
Right.
Which shows that decrease of, you know, what, roughly 80,000, 85,000?
85,000, okay.
Yeah, so, budget year to budget year.
Nice work, staff.
Couple of housekeeping measures. You know, unless otherwise noted, personnel costs are up, or technically down, per the salary increases, per policy and/or union contracts, FICA's remain the same for a number of years, and IMRF. As we see, the city's IMRF rate actually went down a little over 2% this year, while exciting, we already know it's going to go back up next year, because they've announced that they're changing their assumptive rate of return on their investments, so that is going to drive it back up a little bit, but we'll take what we get for this year. Also on the slides, as we go through them, if there's a reason for an increase or a decrease that's listed, that would be more of a substantive item. For example, if office supply is changed by $25, that's probably not something that I'm really going to highlight, why office supply is changed by $25, but if a line item changed by 15,000, there's a good chance there'll be a notation, at least highlighting that particular line item. And then, as always, in order to get consensus, as I said, so we're not flipping back and forth, we try to ask questions on each of the sections as we go through, and then that's when we would turn it back over to Chairman to vet those questions out.
So, I would just ask, before we start, I know this is being recorded, please make sure you speak up. I know there are plans to put this on a podcast, and there are plans for some community meetings as well to hear this, so if you can please make sure you speak up if you have a question, we would appreciate it, because we plan on sharing this in a couple of different forums. So, if you're ready to start, let's do it.
So, next slide, has a general fund summary. So, with fiscal 19, we're currently projected to end the year by a little over 211,000 to the good. You may recall, as presented in the first table, the budgeted surplus was a little over 40,000. So, and really, this is driven predominantly on the expense side, reduction of expenditures from the 14.1 that was budgeted to a little over 13.8 that's projected to be spent. I would make a quick note on the revenues, you might notice it's coming in 154,000 under budget. You may recall, a couple of meetings ago, there was a motion to reduce the transfer in to the general fund from the water fund by $200,000. So, if you actually take, if you were to add in that $200,000, as it would have been, the revenues would have been 45,000 to the good. So, that's really just that coming in under budget based upon that reduction of the transfer in from the water fund.
So, I'm just looking at the personnel schedule, and as I look at personnel schedule fiscal year 2019, and I compare that with fiscal year 18, we added one employee, I'm on page 47, so we added just one employee. Sorry, getting a little excited. We added one employee, but yet we had a surplus, and we had a reduction in expenditures. So, I like to summarize things, since sometimes people just like to run with different ideas, but can you confirm that that's the case? If you look at page 47, you've talked about us having a reduction in expenditures, correct? We're talking about a surplus of 211,000, and we've added one person. Is that all correct for those listening at home?
Based upon what I'm hearing you say, yes.
Okay, sorry to jump the gun, but, go ahead. You had a question? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The surplus that we have, that we are going surplus this year's budget, it's also because the cost of some of our projects came down, right? And then, and then, let me answer that question, I have a follow-up on another question, if you don't mind.
Do you want to let him answer it first?
Yeah.
Director Wilson?
Sure, so, hate to answer with a question, but projects, you mean like the construction projects?
Yes.
So, that's all contained within the CIP, so this is just the core operations of the city, so administration, CD, finance, police department, and public works, non-water related.
And then, let me do one more.
Yes, please do.
So, the follow-up with personnel, yeah, we downsized our personnel, one person, and we'd still have that, but we also outsourced in the building department right now, we have a contract up there.
It's still part of our expenditures, though. Right, so, go ahead, Brett.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Was that, that was part of the expenditures you noted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So, it's still, okay, so we still saved money?
We did.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Please continue.
Okay, sure, thank you. So, moving on to the bottom chart. The, so this is the as-presented version of the budget, the rest of the general fund. You can see, just going down to the bottom line, as-presented, projecting a surplus of just under 59,000. You can see revenues 14.66, expenditures 14.6. So, that's kind of what the rest of the deck for the general fund will be going through and, you know, vetting those things out, so. Move on.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, I'm on page 48, on other police revenue. We budgeted 12,000, and was 34.5, and for next year, we're budgeting 13,000. So, is that because, is that due to the cameras, or what was the?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, unless, Greg, remember specifically, there was a one-time revenue that came through there, I don't remember if it was all old cases that got closed out, but there was some one-time event that hit other police revenue this year, that kind of created that spike in there, which is why, if you notice in the blue column, it goes back down to the more normalized number of 13,000.
Yeah, that's kind of why I was asking, is what that was.
There was a one-time event in there, I apologize, I don't remember what that is off the top of my head, but it was a one-time, one-time event.
Okay, thank you.
Please continue.
Sure. So, here we have a summary of revenues within the general fund, and I apologize, some of these slides, I couldn't get all of my notes on there, so there's two pages. So, we'll leave this slide up while I talk through the notes. So, the increase in the taxes line item is predominantly driven by an increase in the sales tax, nominal increase in property tax, and also use tax based upon the new IML guidance. There was an offset, however, by a decrease in the telecommunications tax, as people are getting rid of landlines in droves, that the telecommunications taxes is continuing to decrease, unfortunately. License and permits is driven by an increase in building permits with some of the expected projects that are in the pipeline at this point. The charges for service, there's a small reduction in cable franchise fees, again, largely related with cord cutting, people going to some of the more streaming services and getting away from traditional cable, and the impound fee, kind of normalizing, again, at a little bit of a lower rate due to some of the changes in, you know, state and/or federal laws. Increased forfeits and fines, that's driven predominantly by tracks guard, with that coming back online and being both ways on Irving Park, as opposed to the one way it was before the intersection project. The investment income, just interest rates are getting better, finally, after a long time, so, just organic appreciation in interest rates. Miscellaneous is driven a little bit by health, employee health contributions, which is just a percentage of the healthcare rates themselves, so nothing really special about that, just as health insurance rates go up, as it's a fixed percentage, that contribution just organically goes up as well. And then, the interfund transfers, as presented, there's no change from the prior year.
Alderman Jacob?
Couple of questions. First question on the property taxes, just for the residents, how much, what percentage does the city get of property taxes? Is that like 6% or what's the percentage that the city actually?
Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, of the entire bill, we don't have the exact rate for this particular year yet, but it's between 5 and 6%, somewhere around there. You know, the lion's share is still schools, and then, I believe, what, fire, parks, and then libraries, so the school's a lion's share of it, or a fairly small percentage, relatively speaking.
And the city could only control the city's portion, I mean, we have no control over any other taxing bodies, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If I may continue?
Please do.
Miscellaneous building fees, in 2018, we had like 1597, then we had budgeted for 19, 1500, but projected zero, and then we have zero for, what is that for?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, not to overstate the, somewhat obvious, but it was for just miscellaneous uncategorized building department fees, and one of the things we did when we went through and cleaned up the fees to the master fee schedule was we effectively eliminated the miscellaneous building fees. It's either a building fee or it's not, so to say it's a miscellaneous building fee is a little overly nebulous. If it's related to a building permit, then it's related to a building permit, if it's not, it's not. So, we didn't, there wasn't really a need for a miscellaneous building fee anymore, because either, again, either it's a building fee or it's something else, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please continue.
Sure, so the next page was the notes that I just read through, so we'll go on to the next table, which is a summary of expenditures. So, the summary expenditures, personnel is up, again, as I mentioned before, largely due to contractual, you know, and we, the last couple of years, with the changes in the police department, those numbers were down a little bit, but the police department is fully staffed now, and so there's going to be some increases in there with the budget, with the newer employees being within the contractual STUP program, so that's going to affect that. Contractual services, about half of that increase is related to the Addison Dispatch contract, the increase in that, and then part of it is also related to an increase in healthcare costs, which can be expected. Let me see, commodities is down based on the continued pressure, downward pressure on fuel prices, we were able to reduce a lot of the fuel budgets based on fuel prices. Capital outlay, some IT infrastructure needs, you know, a lot of it's spinning around the ERP, but that's not specifically related to it, but peripherals related to it, and then the interfund transfers down slightly due to the decrease in the contribution to the SURF fund of that $25,000.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have a question, police and fire, why is it 45.75% change? Some of the other ones are minus.
Page fifty, I'm sorry. Oh.
Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Sure, you're talking, you're talking to the board and police and fire commission?
Yeah.
Let me just double-check real quick. Sure, so that increase is because they have to do a test this year and make a new list for the officers, and so basically virtually that entire almost five-thousand-dollar increase is related to the testing program that they have to do this, this year.
So may I, may I ask another one, Randy?
Sure, please do.
And then the police, the, is up six-point-two-six. Is, is that the salary increase? Is that what it's at?
Go ahead.
Sure, swing into a little more detail and get to the police portion, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, but no, to answer your question, the majority of it is the salaries and then also the increase in the ACDC contract, the dispatch contract. So it's both personnel and the dispatch contract.
I just thought the dispatch, I'm sorry, I just thought the dispatch contract was a separate line item, I didn't know it was coming out of police salary like that.
Director Wilson?
Sure, but if you're looking at the, the summary on page fifty, that's all encompassing of the entire department. So that, so that's why that's presenting, that's the entire department.
Anybody else? Alderman Jacob, please speak up.
Yes, the DUI tech fund, I see we budgeted twenty-two-five, it was, we're projected seventeen-five, but it seems like we've been over twenty-thousand every year since two thousand seventeen, and we're expecting twenty-thousand next year, so why was it down? Or what exactly is the tech fund?
Please, go ahead.
I love Chief, I can speak to it, but he can do it a little more eloquently than I can, so.
Sure, so. Jacob, what page is that on?
Page forty-nine, under, like up on top by fines, fees, and forfeits. Right above the tracks guard.
All right, DUI tech fund?
Yeah.
So every DUI case that goes to DuPage County Court, if there's a finding of guilty or a plea of guilty, that's something that the judge issues as a DUI tech fund. Those funds are returned back to the city and they have to be used by statute for specific items. You know, the DUI numbers last year were down a little bit, the year before they were up, so it's just a fluctuating number and you really shouldn't, you know, depend on the highest number that you could possibly get. You know, we, I think the finance was probably just conservative in making sure that we're covering that number, and then those funds are set aside that have to be used for projects that we've used them for in the past, our replacement of the cameras in the squad cars that go directly towards DUI prosecution and/or the computers in the squad cars, and that was where during CIP we talked about complete replacement of that, that whole system could almost a hundred percent be funded by the DUI tech fund, which has over two-hundred thousand in it right now.
Thanks, Chief. One more question?
I do have one more. Investment income, again, I see twenty-seventeen, we were at twenty-six, twenty-eighteen, we were at forty-six, we're going to be at seven, close to seventy-two. Is that, exactly what kind of, do we change our investment sum of funds or what do we change that's increasing at such a good rate?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, it's pretty much just interest rates are getting a lot better, you know, you know, and even the CD rates have gone up by, you know, one, one and a half, almost two percent over the last year, year and a half, so getting some, some far better returns than we've seen in years past.
Mayor, was it?
I just said because we have money in the bank, so naturally we're getting that higher interest.
Anybody else? Alderman Tony Catalano?
And how much is that? How much money in the bank do we have?
Please, go ahead, Director Wilson. Keep you on your toes tonight.
I was going to say, yeah, I hadn't, hadn't worked anything up for that one. You know, it's, you know, I'd have to get back to you with an exact number, we put it in the, the month, in the reports, but yeah, I can get that and we can recirculate that, I want to make sure I give you a good number.
Come. Great. Go ahead, Brad.
Sure.
Don't go ahead, Brad. Alderman Eugene Wesley has a question.
So, let's go back, is all the money to the state owed us at one time? Have we received all that money?
Director Wilson?
Well, no, yes, so they've, they've changed the way that they, they remit, so they're still, obviously, you know, there's still the, the three-month cycle and sales tax and whatnot, but all of the, the backlog on the income tax and whatnot, that has all been caught up and they're on a regular schedule. And they've actually changed the remittance on that, where it's actually statutorily, they have to remit it within a certain period of time, and so they are current on all of that as well as the gaming and all the revenue streams, so at this time, they're not behind.
So they pay all their IOUs to us?
Correct, yeah, the state's statutorily caught up.
Mayor, go ahead.
Actually, there's a couple, I believe there's a couple of different bills out there, so the money would flow a little quicker through the municipalities, that's, those will be coming up.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so, so those bills in particular would, they would allow the money to flow to the municipalities should the state not pass a budget, so it would carve it out, since it's, it's, since the money's already earmarked to the municipalities, it would get caught up in Springfield gridlock, since it's earmarked for us already, it would just flow through as a natural course like sales tax or something like that does, so that would be a good bill to pass, actually.
Yeah, very good bill.
Yeah. As far as Springfield goes.
Okay, please continue.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so there are five expanded level items within this budget, there's four in the general fund with green sheets, and there's one in the road and bridge with the red slash pinkish colored sheet, maybe salmon. So we can see what those are, and obviously we'll, we'll discuss each of those as we get to them, but that's the five in question there.
Can you explain too, because we, I know we inserted part of the comprehensive plan in there, and so I just wanted to make a comment to those back home, make sure they understand the book in case people start trying to misconstrue things. We put part of the comprehensive plan in this budget. Comprehensive plan is a plan of ideas that residents have brought, so for instance, I don't know, central running through might be an idea, right? That's an idea that was part of the comprehensive plan, that even though it's in this book right here, it's not part of our budget, so I just want to reiterate that, and I hope if you guys have any questions at home, you'll make a point to continue to call, and really make sure and question people that come to your door or may call City Hall, because I know it's caused quite a backlog at City Hall with phone calls and concerns, but I just want to make sure you go, take the time to go through this book and make sure people understand the contents of the book is a budget along with the comprehensive plan, which was ideas brought to us by residents. Just want to make sure that's very clear on what is constructed in this book. Any comments or questions on that? Just to make sure everybody's clear on that. Okay, go ahead. Director Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that's all of the high-level items for the general fund, now we'll get into the department-by-department pages within the deck, and then also, so the administration slide here does articulate with the administration tab in the budget book, which is also page fifty-one, starting there, so. Within the administration fund, we do have personnel being down, that's related to the GIS person going to part-time during this fiscal year and, you know, is still so as of now, and then also the decrease in other, it's related to legislative conferences, meetings going down a little bit, and that was simply something where we've analyzed the last few years what those costs have been and tried to bring it down to a more normalized level, just based on what the averages have been for the last couple of years, so. Not look to specifically cut anything from legislative conferences and meetings, but trying to just tie it out to a, a truer level going forward.
Any questions on this? Can I ask a quick question with, related to GIS, have, have we identified a person? Go ahead, City Manager Murmice?
We've actually, since we've had our GIS position, we've had the same employee who's been with us for some time, he had asked if he could go part-time, maybe temporarily for some issues outside of work, and perhaps maybe go back to full-time later, but we valued that employee and didn't want to lose him, so we opted to keep him and then maybe go back to full-time or keep part-time, but he was a good employee, so we decided to go that route.
Great. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
For the budget that is now proposed, is a part-time?
For this next coming year, it'll be part-time, but it may go up to full-time the next year after that.
Great, any other questions? Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Okay. There's no other questions on administration, going to the city clerks line item or budget tab. Really, the only thing of any note is just the increase in the contractual services is related to fees, related to the codifier, and that's always a little bit of an interesting one, because we pay basically based upon volume of what ordinances we pass and what has to get updated in the code, so if there's more and/or larger ordinances that need to be codified and updated online, that costs a little bit more in any given year than if there's less. The last few years have been a little bit higher, so we, again, tried to make that mirror what the, the average for the last few years has been, so.
So no changes here, folks, anybody, any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley or Alderman Jacob, any questions? Great, you can keep going.
Thank you. The next department is community development. So there is the one expanded level item, which we'll get to after we get through this particular page, and then the decrease in contractual with the property maintenance line item, as I'm sure you're all aware, that function has been relocated within the city, and so the monies related to that, the property maintenance has been taken out of the community development budget. Other than that, like I said, the only other thing of really significant note is the expanded level item, which is the next, the next slide, unless there's any questions on anything else before we go on.
Sorry, I'm just reading it, no. Anybody else? Alderman Eugene Wesley or, geez, Alderman Jacob, excuse me.
Brad, on the expenses, we had uniforms, it went from like nine-fifteen to seventeen-fifty. Do they have uniforms or what do we mean by uniforms on that?
Alderman Jacob, can you give us the page, please? May I ask, everybody, actually, before, when you ask a question, can you note the page for us before you ask the question?
Yeah, page fifty-nine.
Thank you.
So under commodities, there's uniforms.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so uniforms, part of it is depending on the different union contracts have set limits for uniform allowances for the employees, and then there's also a little bit put in there for the non-union employees for, you know, the, the city polos or something to that effect. And so I believe the prior year with, as Alderman Wesley had mentioned earlier, with some of the, the outsourcing or whatever, some of the employees weren't there that would have otherwise utilized that, so, but we can take a look at that number, though, for this year and make sure that it's, it's correct, but that's, I think due to some of the changes in the departments, that's probably why you say a little peak and valley in that number.
Multiple questions. Alderman Jacob, follow up?
Yeah, just, yeah, just with the uniforms, I don't get it in here often during the day since I'm at my real job, but do they, do typically most people wear the, like our city logo, the polo shirts, or not necessarily?
Director Wilson?
Depends on the person and the day. Some employees wear them every day, other employees, not every day, so it, it varies.
Mayor?
Just on that item, so we budgeted two thousand, we only use nine-fifteen, so basically Mr. Wilson lowered the number for next year. Correct, Brad?
Yeah.
No, no, it was two thousand, for this year, we're in, we're only, we're spending nine-fifteen, so he's budgeting seventeen-fifty instead of two thousand again.
Right?
Correct.
Anything else, Mayor? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have two questions.
Two questions? Could you please speak up?
I have.
Thank you.
Two questions.
And give the page number as well, please?
Fifty-nine.
Okay.
Fire, Fire District Review Service, do we eliminate that? We don't pay them for the plan reviews anymore?
Go ahead, Director Wilson?
Yeah, so unless I'm wrong and Mr. Cage wants to correct me, that is charged when a permit is pulled, and then, so it's rolled into the building permit fee, and then when it's paid, since it's a pass-through, it's remitted to the Fire District through the permit, line, building permit line item, and so that's why that went to zero, because it's not really an expense since it's a pass-through, so it goes into the building permit revenue account and then goes out as a contra-revenue expense to the Fire District.
Okay.
Second question?
One of them. Office equipment, what are we buying this year?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I will have to defer to, to Mr. Cage.
Director Cage, if you wouldn't mind going to the podium? Speak your name, your address, blood type?
Sure about blood type. Thank you. Yes, office equipment, typically we have an amount in there, and we've reduced it, we don't have any plans for anything in particular, this is a catch-all if we've, you know, if there's a problem or if there's an issue, as you can see, the last budget, last fiscal year, it was two thousand, there's no, there's no plans to buy anything of any substantial size, that's why we reduced it to the eighteen-hundred, so. Long answer, but no, no plans at this time.
Thanks, Director. Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Page fifty-nine. Could you explain from twenty-seventeen for professional services, thirty-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one, and now twenty-twenty, we're at one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
That would, okay, City Manager Murmice?
Yeah, that's a mixture of outsourcing various components within that department and then switching back and forth, so it's, it's, you have that note page, right?
Yeah.
You can go ahead, I gotta bring it up.
Go ahead, Director Wilson?
Sure, so for the, to the manager's point, so the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand is broken down between, was it four or five different firms to be estimated this year? One is SafeBilt, which is doing the building inspections and the COC inspections, there's some money for, I believe, Robinson in there. Oh, you have those now, okay.
Could you guys just make sure you speak up?
Yeah, Robinson for Stormwater, TESCA and Associates for some planning activities, and Christopher Burke for also Stormwater Review for planning. Those are the four items in there.
That's. Sorry. Mayor, please go ahead.
Yeah, a quick note on that, so since we're looking at two thousand seventeen, the salaries at that time was six-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, let's not forget that, where the projected for this year is five-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, basically a hundred thousand dollars less, so, just in, let me repeat that since my microphone was to the side, two thousand seventeen, it was six-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand was the salaries, where this year is five-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, so it's a hundred thousand dollars, we, you know, if we're gonna look back two years, let's get all the numbers correct.
So let's go back to the follow-up by Alderman Roy Wesley, you still have a follow-up?
No, that's all right. Excuse me.
Okay. Alderman Peter Jacob?
Yeah, a quick question here, the, as far as what we were talking about, I mean, if we did not contract those services, we'd have to have an engineer, we'd have to have a city engineer, which we've had that before, and the engineer really didn't know a whole heck of a lot about everything, so that's kind of the reason we went to that, and the engineer made ninety or a hundred thousand, so the amount of money we're spending really isn't that much, and we have qualified people looking at all of our different issues in town. at all of our different issues in town. Is that correct?
I mean, I mean, we're kind of beating dead horse. The mayor said it perfectly well. I don't know, City Manager Mermis, do you want to add anything else to that?
We did at one time have actually two in-house engineers. We had an engineering supervisor and an engineering, just regular employee under the supervisor. It was, I believe, total cost of that was in the 200s. We eliminated that probably around 2009 or '10.
Mayor, you have a?
Yeah. Just so everybody understands, 2017, the personnel total, right, was 740,000, we're now at 620,000, so that's basically almost $120,000 savings this year. So if we add the 35,000 plus the 120, it brings us up to about 155, let's call it 154. So in 2017, we actually spent more money than we did this year. I don't know, that's math, to me, it's simple.
Any follow-up to that? The rituals?
No.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments?
Have we already talked about this personnel?
I'm sorry?
Are we ready to talk about 50, I mean 60 pages?
Any other question? I had a question actually on page 58.
58?
Going backwards. So I was asking Alderman Woods this and just kind of found it odd, maybe the data hadn't come in yet, but where's 18, 2018? Director Wilson?
That is a great question. So a lot of these, the statistics come out of the audit, which is on a calendar year, and so it's weird because the fiscal 19 audit, which is predominantly, which is eight months of 2018, the statistical section for that is calendar 2018.
That's okay. So it hasn't come out yet?
Yeah, it really hasn't come out yet. We've talked about trying to accelerate that, to get it in, into the budget for the cycles, but.
Well, you're preparing in December for this, so I get it.
Right, you're preparing in December, and so the year's not done yet, so it's kind of hard to get that.
I know this is the budget, but I wanted to take a quick second to acknowledge the fact that in 17, there were 961 building permits issued, which were a record, permit inspections, 2,274, which tells me something. It tells me people want to stay in their homes, and I think a lot of it has to do with what city staff has been doing, so thank you, guys, kudos. Thank you to my fellow council, most of you, great job. And I think that's part of why I think Crane's rated us one of the hottest housing markets in the first half of 2018, is a lot of this effort by the residents and a lot of this effort by the staff, so I just wanted to make sure we pointed that out. So that's all I have. Any other comments on that? All right, let's continue. Let's go to page 60 for Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yeah, so going on, this is the first expanded level item that was in the budget. Page 60, as Alderman Wesley correctly pointed out, was green sheet, which means the city manager did recommend the item. The full narrative is obviously on the green sheet, there's a summary narrative up there. And I would just note at the funding total there that the position, the body would still exist in some regard, just in a different fashion should the green sheet not get approved, so.
How long would that intern be in place if this was not approved? City Manager Mermis?
I would think in perpetuity.
So full-time intern?
No, I mean, right now, the intern's kind of part-time.
You just automatically bring new people?
So I'm saying we would keep an intern on a regular basis in the department.
I got you.
Not the same intern, obviously. They'd get a little old eventually.
We have the lifelong learners, I'm just asking, right? Would there, sorry, would there be a, it's an unpaid internship, correct?
No, it's paid, that's why that.
Oh, there, no, the internship?
No.
That one is paid as well? Okay, okay. Oh, right, right, okay. Any questions on this? Any additional questions? Mayor?
So Jeff, I see you're recommending this basically because of all the level of construction going on in the community, right, and they're a little busy down there.
Go ahead.
Well, that's not the main reason, that's one of the reasons that can contribute to it. Really, in reality, the main reason is because we have, the council always likes succession planning. Inevitably, there's always employees that drop out of departments, get a promotion, go somewhere else, move out of state, whatever. We end up with a backlog of work because we're short of employees, and this particular position is a very hard-working intern we've had for two years, who is now graduating with a master's degree, so we'd like to reward that employee and move up within the organization, and that's in reality what it is, succession planning and having somebody that knows the organization in the department.
This is something we've spoken to multiple times, all right? I know we've, I've harped on you, Jeff, about succession planning, and I give you kudos for taking that feedback and running with it. I feel like we need a bench, right? There's changes. People always want to better themselves, and whether that's here within our organization or outside of, we need to be prepared. I've been down there, either pulling a permit or seeing people pull permits, and it's nuts. That's a good problem to have, but at the same time, we can't, we can't put that much added stress on our staff because they're working their behinds off, but we need to make sure we get them the help that they deserve and they need desperately. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So my only concern about this position is, in this, last year I had a lot of phone calls about permits being issued on a quicker manner.
People are waiting.
People are waiting for permits almost a week to two weeks for fence permits.
Or longer.
Okay? My question is, I have no problem adding to staff, but is this going to change, you know, those permits out? Because I received multiple calls from people waiting too long for permits.
So can I, before we go to you, I can say I would agree with you on some of those, right? But I will tell you that staff took that bull by the horns, they've actually worked on communication, I've seen some of the drafts, so they've actually gotten a point, Alderman Jacob can attest, where they're being, they're much better at communication, and what they've created are these templates that say, here's what to expect. You are pulling this permit, this is what you should expect, this is the process, and I think, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, you will be bringing some examples of that work to us hopefully in the next month or two. City Manager Mermis?
One of the internal projects this winter, as Alderman Wesley had stated, some of the permit times we didn't like, I didn't approve of, so we wanted to not only improve efficiencies downstairs, but improve communication, so we had a collaborative effort with our special events marketing manager to help building department create some forms that are more user-friendly for the residents, so with the user-friendly information as well as cracking of the whip on personnel, hopefully we could trim down some of those permit times that you may have spoken of. You should see some of these pieces in the next couple of weeks.
So.
But in reference to your question about the position, I'm not sure there's a direct correlation there, it's more of succession planning and getting a body in there that knows the department, so I guess.
Well, according, if you don't mind, according to the statement for the proposal is to help out with permits and other issues here.
They're inevitably going to be helping out in all avenues.
Okay, so again, I have no problem proving this, but I really want to see a change, these permits get out quicker because, I'll tell you, I got multiple calls last year. I mean, a guy had a leaking roof and it would.
So it sounds like you have, you had a problem, we think, we're pretty confident this will address it. I think, wait till you see some of the communication pieces that Grant and, I don't know, Mrs. Chrissy and Ed have been involved in putting together. I really believe you'll be happy. I think you'll be happy. We, there's going to be mistakes. I will tell you that a lot of this is communication, and I think we brought that to Jeff multiple times. Sometimes we want to hear what we want to hear, you know? I want to hear my permit's done in five days, but the reality is 10 days. So what's great about this transparency piece of the paperwork says, no, he told me 10 days, and then I can go to Ed and Ed said, well, no, I told him 20 days. Look, well, then I can say, were they, were they given this permit document? They were. Here it is. And that keeps us out of these awkward situations where we got to sit in a room and try to mediate. It's in black and white, and I'm really excited when staff brings this to us. Again, you're always going to have those contractors that have those hoops and obstacles, and it's usually certain people that love to bring those folks in there just to cause chaos, but I really believe that once it's in black and white, it eliminates a lot of that, and so I'm excited for you guys to bring back some of that transparency. Mayor?
Yeah, some of this stuff, I mean, contractors want to hustle and they want to move.
And they want to get paid.
I had, I had a lady call me to speak specifically because of that, and our inspector was there and told him to take the siding off because they had to inspect the taping. The lady called me and she was upset, and I go, we need to make sure the taping is correct. You know, some of this stuff, the contractors, these guys come in, want to fly. Well, lo and behold, when they pulled the siding off, their taping was garbage, they had to redo it. So, you know, some people, contractors are going to push and this and that, we need to make sure that things are done right, and they're basically working through the kinks.
Alderman Wesley, you have a very valid point, by the way.
But this lady was very happy, by the way.
So you have a very valid point, I just want to make sure we point out that these things are going to hopefully address that. Absolutely, for sure. You have a very valid point, though, of course. Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, going back to the communication, I know on Ward 1, I mean, we had some complaints and basically it was all about communication. I mean, people were expecting their money back in three days, they, again, they, it was not communicated.
Yep.
That's why we work with Jeff and the community development department to create documents so people know what to expect. This way, when they walk out of here, they could say, okay, once my roof is done, I should get a check back in two weeks or whatever it might be. It's going to be in writing, they know it, they know what to expect walking out the door, and that avoids a lot of problems. So I think a lot of the phone calls we had probably had to do with communication issues, so, thank you.
Alderman Tori Cantalotto?
Yeah, do we have a policy on emergency permits? Like to Alderman Wesley's point, if you have a leaking roof or you have to replace a hot water tank, don't we have a policy as far as emergency?
Director Cage, if you don't mind?
To answer your question, absolutely. We've had a number of those recently with the terrible weather, the freeze door cycle. We've had a number of people who've had a number of issues, and I've had calls on the weekend where pipes have burst. What we have done, I can think of two instances that spring to mind, is that we've given the okay, we know that it's on the weekend, obviously, we're not open, we've given the okay to do the work, to fix the problem, we don't want a homeowner who doesn't have a water service or any other problems that's damaging their property or their house. We've given the okay, and then the, what happens is rather than wait till Monday, fix it over the weekend, come in Monday, get a permit after the fact, leave the hole open so we can inspect the pipe, document it, and then you get a permit after the fact. So yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-ups? Alderman, geez, Alderman Sorrentino?
Must be me. Okay, you know, the word awkwardness came up more than once, and I had an occasion twice in 2018 with residents calling me really livid over the permit process. I'm a firm believer that every issue has two sides to the story, so I had them meet me here at City Hall with the staff there, and when the lady said, well, I've been doing all this and all this and all that, staff pulled out three different letters that were mailed to the contractor requesting certain information to move forward with the permit process. Anyway, it was right there in black and white, so the resident started backpedaling. So, now this was on a Friday with a holiday Monday, so the owner thought, well, let me see if I could put this back in my favor. She said, so if you're, what you're telling me is if my contractor had all this ready for you, how soon could I get my permit? They said Wednesday. I called her Wednesday, got the permit. I mean, so there's always two sides to the story, and more times than not, it falls on the person who's doing the work. So staff does a good job from my two times in the, in the room, I give them a lot of credit.
And I will add to that, I had that, I had that, what, a week and a half ago, where proactively, well, we had our meeting here, proactively, staff reached out to the contractor. By the time I even got home from work to check up with the resident, he shot me an email and said, are you kidding me? He said, you guys reached out to me already? My contractor, I called him, you guys are all ahead of me. He's like, I feel behind. He's like, you guys are on key. So I'm not saying we're perfect, I think we're getting better, but you have to understand, just like any corporation, we're humans, we make mistakes, the key is continuous improvement, and I believe the steps that they're taking, albeit whether that be communicating and having meetings with residents or putting some of this stuff in a format of being in writing, I think is going to help that process. Mayor?
I just want to know, are we going to give Jeff his expanded level item?
I'll make a motion to go.
I'm trying to. Okay. Alderman Sorrentino?
Just a follow-up. One of the other complaints had to do with an emergency situation that took forever to be addressed. However, on the letter and on the application, nowhere did it mention the word emergency. So the staff told the people that in the event this should happen again, just big red letters, emergency on top of the application, it'll automatically go to the top of the stack. They said, okay. So that's that. Kudos, kudos to you and your team.
Great, so we have a recommendation to move forward. Any questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, Director Wilson. Do we need a vote? Okay, can we do a roll call? Okay. Roll call, please, Emily?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Absolutely, yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. And that passes. Continue on to finance.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Yeah.
I'm sorry? Did you not want to speak about it because it's about Brett? It's kind of like reviewing yourself or like asking.
Yeah, I mean.
Any questions or comments on this section?
Anything for Albert and his amazing tie?
It is a very good tie. Any, we good? Okay, I think we can move forward.
Thank you. Legal services, had to bump up the legal budget a little bit this year, you know, legal's all, you know, TNM and utilization, and utilization has been trending upward, so we had to increase the budget.
I'm sorry, I'm reading. Any questions? Yeah, Alderman Eugene Wesley? We have any union contracts coming up? Director Wilson?
Not until next April 30th.
So that's why it's still right, the labor.
Correct, labor's correct.
Alderman Jacob?
For the adjudication, which attorney helps with that? Is that the general fund or?
The general fund or, what'd you say?
Legal general fund, page 65.
Yes, we get off the page number, sorry.
65.
Page 65?
65, on top it says legal general fund. I'm asking which line item is for the adjudication?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so predominantly it would be that general fund, the top one, the, was it the 42062, and then also, a little bit of it comes out of the operating departments as well, but the... the, the lion's share of it is in that, that top line. But there's the, the CD portion and the PD portion.
So, what you're telling me, if I'm looking at this correctly, we budgeted for fiscal year 19, $261,000 in this general fund, but because of adjudication hearings, and I know, and I'm looking at the other, the general and the labor, that jumped up to 321, $321,000? Director Wilson?
Yeah, I mean, the vast majority of that first line of legal is our friends at Bonn, Dixon, Conway.
Okay.
Like I said, the adjudication part, because it's by and large a set fee per date, so that doesn't change. It's, you know, it's just a flat fee per, per appearance.
For the date of the adjudication hearing?
Correct, correct.
But if the people don't show up or, or there's nonsense or they have to delay it, then we have, do we have to keep paying that or is that just a one-time fee?
It's, it's once a month, so it's largely just a one-time fee.
Okay, one-time fee.
Yeah, so, so, yeah. But like I said, yeah.
Great. Mayor?
Yeah, and let's not forget, Mr. Bonn's been a little busy with that property next door. I'm sure there's been a lot of negotiations with the bank property and whatnot, so.
Property acquisitions?
We have things going on, so.
So, we have the labor, we have the property acquisitions, we have adjudication hearings. Have we broken, broken down that adjudication hearing? I know we took that in-house this year. Has there been any breakdown to see if there's been a reduction in cost or, or how that's played? Director Wilson?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if CD's done anything, but I'm not aware of any specific thing. I mean.
No worries. Alderman, Alderman Sorrentino?
Is there any reimbursement for that cost if the adjudication is not in their behalf?
Do they pay court fees if, if the defendant is found guilty?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the answer. I'm not involved in that. I'm not involved in that process, so I don't, I don't know. We can find out, though.
Could you find out and put that, please, in the manager's report? Jeff, please?
Thank you.
Either way, whether we are responsible, whether the taxpayers are responsible for paying that or the, the party itself, that would be good to know. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I think we're good with legal.
Okay.
Moving on to the police department. And this kind of breaks down a little bit more. Alderman, E. Wesley's question from a little bit ago, what the increase in that was, again, predominantly on the personnel side and contractual services side. Personnel, again, is the, the new officers, the department being fully staffed and the step increases per the collective bargaining agreement. The contractual services is the ACDC contract, and then there is the expanded level item within the police department. And then the decrease in the other is the District 7 program, which kind of speaks for itself. So, I mean, entertain questions and then go into the, the green sheet for the police department.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The seasonal help, if you don't mind me asking, those are the crossing guards for the pool that we get reimbursed?
Which line item was that?
Seasonal employment?
What page number? 69?
69, I'm sorry.
40106? Go ahead, Chief.
That's correct. That's the part-time crossing guards for the pool crossing and then the Park District, that agreement we just signed last week, they reimburse, I think it's about 40% of that cost, so it's a cost share for that, those services.
Okay, Chief, oh. Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Two questions. The overtime pay, I know we're expanding on different things for the city, the music, the weekly music activities that we're going to have and the car shows. Just want to make sure we're, that overtime, that's all paid out of there, correct, for the officers?
Chief?
That's correct. All the special events are paid out of there, including additional traffic grants that we do. We had an increase of about 3% in that for this year. Two years ago, when we were shorter, the expenditures were a little bit higher. This, this current fiscal year, they're coming way down due to being fully staffed, but all the special events do come out of that overtime cost.
I have, okay, you have a follow-up?
Yeah. Do any, does any of that money for staff come out of the tourism fund or no?
Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Excuse me. Not directly, but there is a transfer to the general fund from the tourism fund that does account for a certain percentage of the salaries. There's kind of a mix and a formula to it, so it, it comes in via transfer, so it's not a, a direct allocation, but it is a reimbursement transfer for personnel services.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
One more question. The professional services, is that like social services and things like that? That's page 69, it's under emergency services, so it's professional services, community services?
42036 and 42034, count number?
Yeah. The professional services, that's what I, what I was asking about.
Chief?
So, the professional services, that is for the city prosecutor to do the administrative hearings and then also for the administrative hearing judge. That's where those costs come out of. Our in-house counseling program that deals with family issues, juvenile issues and those things, that's under the social services net, and we pay them a monthly fee for unlimited service, services from them. And I think last year, we were, I can't remember in the annual report, but well over 100 families that, that we serviced through that.
You said only one more question? Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Well, based on something the chief just said, you said the prosecutor, we just went through the legal department? So, where it says attorneys, legal prosecution, so there's some legal and over here as well?
That's correct. I, I, and that started, the, the police department was the first people, the department that was doing administrative adjudication for the railroad hearings and for toes that happen when we make an arrest. So, those, the cost for the city prosecutor for that and the hearing judge have always come out of the police department budget separately.
Okay. Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, I want to go back to page 62.
Thank you for that.
And. Yeah, sorry about that.
Out of legal?
62. So, the vehicle stickers, I know in 2016, we had 12,229, and now we, you know, we're going down again. Are we going to come up with another data check like we did back in 2016, Chief?
Go ahead, Chief.
I think there's two parts to that. One is the finance director will probably touch on that they did send out the, the updates to the people that didn't pay. But yes, we can request another update to the database, and Director Wilson and I have discussed about doing that during this year. I think it's a $500 or $600 fee to do that, but then we'll, we'll rerun those and, you know, look for changes. And I think council had given direction to not do that every year, but every two to three years as turnover happens.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we're back to page 68-ish. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Let's go 69, comp 42028, emergency services. What is, what, what is that?
Chief, go ahead.
That's actually for the maintenance of the tornado sirens in town.
May I continue?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Office equipment. 46001. Notice increase, what are we buying? 46001.
Page 70, the next page.
Page 70, I'm sorry, page 70.
Page 70, okay. Go ahead, Chief, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So, actually, we're proposing the identical budget as last year. The, the projected expenditures are a little bit down. Some of the things that recently came out of that are the new training room tables that we replaced those 28-year-old tables with, and then a file cabinet or a desk or, or something that, that would need, need replaced, so, but we are proposing a level budget for this year.
Okay. One other question, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Miscellaneous. That, that really, it's like we throw the kitchen sink. If we don't have it, we'll just throw in the miscellaneous item. 49099.
If they don't want to eat the Chris, if they don't want to eat the prisoner food?
49099, miscellaneous. That's up.
The last one.
The last one. Miscellaneous.
Yep. So, I'll give you some of the items that have come out of that in the past. We had an award for retirement, a, a shadow box. We had water for the, for meetings in town, like Citizen Police Academy. It, it's, it's a small amount, but some that doesn't fit under general budget items.
Chief, in those instances, I mean, are each of those expenses like audited or do they have to file an actual expense report for those kind of things? They got P-card?
Yeah, so all those go right either through the P-card or a purchase process with a purchase order or a petty card, petty cash type thing, and all those bills come before council eventually. Yeah.
Any other questions? Alderman Sorrentino?
Alderman Jacob wanted me to ask this on his behalf because he's been asking too many questions. Chief, could you tell us where the liaison at Fenton High School's, his income comes from?
Go ahead, Chief.
Sure. We, as, as you know, we have the officer that's assigned to Fenton High School for the last, I think, 19 years. Fenton High School reimburses us for all the school days that he's in school, plus his overtime when he works special events such as dances, sporting events. So, we receive, I think we budgeted this year in the $90,000 range for that, and then when he's not in school during the summer, then he works a shift and helps fill in for vacations and wherever the department needs him.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're going to jump. Yeah, ready? Go to the skunk program, please.
Sure. This is the second expanded level item in the budget, green sheet, page 71. Green indicates manager, recommendation to approve.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Questions? Go ahead, please, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, my question is, is that going to be enough? Because we came back, we put so much away last year, then we came back and we added more to it. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, what we had, that the first proposal, then we added more. Is that real, is that really going to be enough? I mean, that's my.
Can you give us the actuals as well?
Yeah, I, I think we ended up spending around, around the $10,000 range for that. What we're going to be coming back with is a recommendation to change that program a little bit. It was very successful and the residents really liked it, but I would like to see some type of guidelines, that there has to be some type of evidence of borrowing or damage or just other than, "I just saw a skunk somewhere on my street." I, I think learning from the first year of the program, we want to have the company come out and document for us that there's some type of evidence of skunk activity actually happening there or a resident providing, or a CSO providing that. And then I'd really like to institute some stricter controls on the outside company that does this to provide us kind of milestones. When they've spent $1,000, they need to let us know when they're at that rather than repeated visits. They got to show evidence that it's ongoing at certain places and not three visits and then on the fourth, they finally catch something. So, I, I, I want to revamp the program a little bit, and I think this is a reasonable amount that gives the residents access to it, but it's not budget breaking.
Okay, thank you.
How quick, after we, we passed this, so this thing went pretty quickly. Our, our funds were, it was a very, one of the most popular programs I've ever seen launched here at the city. How, wasn't it only a few months and we ran out of funding?
Yeah, we, we did start it in, I think, March, we approved it, and April, we rolled it out, and then by August, pretty much, most of the funds were gone. But I think with these new guidelines that we're going to come up with and also a little more accountability on behalf of the company with them making some, some changes to how they handle things, I, I think this is a good starting point. You know, again, if something is massively successful, even with these changes, we could always come back and say, we need to adjust a little bit more, but I, I don't want to have more than this right now to make sure we can hold that company accountable, too.
Okay, sounds great. We have a motion, we have a second. Can you do a roll call? Eileen, please?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes?
Kudos to Alderman Catalano for developing this program from the get-go.
Great idea.
Residents love it.
You're making them blush. All right, so let's move on to the board and fire, oh, excuse me, city manager Myrmus.
Just a brief moment of comedy. In the, in the 15 years, almost 15 years I've been here, this was probably the only item that I thought 100% guaranteed would pass. Nobody likes the smell of skunks. I was quite baffled.
I like it. Police and Fire Commission. Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noted here, it's the, all of the increases across all three of the expense categories is related to the testing that they're going to have to do in the summer, fall time, related to the creation of a new officer list.
So, we're going to create a new list, how would that work with the existing candidates that are number two, three, four? They just get next? Chief?
Sure. So, by statute, every two years, we have the, the Board of Police and Fire Commission has to run a new list, and what, so that'll be happening this summer. The current list goes completely away, and the Board of Police and Fire Commission actually limits the number of applications because in the past, we've gotten as many as 800 applications, and you have to pay about $25 for each test. So, what they've done in the last couple of sessions, I kind of worked with them to make a cutoff on the number of applications at the 200 to 250 range because realistically, we're only going to be hiring two to four, maybe five on every given list over a two-year period. So, it really doesn't make sense to have 800 people and the city have all that cost when realistically, you're, you're not going to have a chance to hire anywhere close to that.
And I would imagine those candidates that are in the top 10, those that don't get hired and are on our list are probably going to get hired somewhere else.
Most likely.
All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? No? Good? Okay, great. We can continue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to Public Works Administration. Nothing.
That is page 74, correct?
Correct, beginning on page 74, correct, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, nothing specifically remarkable about any of the numbers. It's down, which is good, but otherwise, nothing really, really remarkable of notes.
Nothing remarkable? I mean, look at the guy, gleaming.
Man, just to let you know, I had a resident, another resident call me the other day about you guys took care of something on South Cedar, there was an ice problem and you guys, she was very ecstatic.
So, any questions on page 76? So, I like the magic that you're showing, Director York, and we're going to fall about 40,000, projected the end 40,000 short, or less, rather. Would you mind taking a second just to kind of talk a little bit about that? What do you think attributed to it? And I obviously can read the line items, but.
Yes, I mean, this will probably end up being a little bit even less than this due to salaries, projected salaries. We did have about three months or so of not having an assistant director, so that helped out a little bit with the budget, but, I mean, mostly, we try to run a pretty tight budget within Public Works and so. we try to run a pretty tight budget within Public Works, and so, just do the best we can.
Well, thank you for what you guys have been doing, for listening to all our... What's that, Alderman Jacob?
I was just saying, we do have two new people, so maybe you should introduce...
Did you wanna take a second to introduce?
Second to introduce our two new staff members, kinda put them on the spot there?
Um, sure. Come over here, come over here, so the cam, so the camera can see you. Hustle up. We're not gonna be here all night because of you two. This young gentleman in the gray shirt, his Alan Lang, came to us from Lion Township. He will be in charge of our streets and our utilities divisions. And Brett Gurelli will be in charge of our wastewater and our dialeride program. Brett came to us from MWRD, thirty-two years' experience. Alan had about ten years' experience or so, right? Ten years' experience, Lion Township, so very excited to have both of them on board.
Thanks, Director York. Any other questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Conferences, why are we proposing six, seventy-seven? Propose six thousand for conferences and meetings.
Go ahead, Ald, Director York.
Yes, normally, we go to a couple conferences a year. Normally, I go to the APWA, PWX conference, and then Alan will possibly go to the Snow and Ice Conference to learn more about snowplowing. So those are what come out of this budget.
Yes, please. I could, I've been talking to some of, some of the, some neighboring communities' public works department folks, and some that I know that were a director, it seems actually kinda low. I know there's a ton of conferences that are out there. I mean, I'm not justifying the number, or trying to justify the number, but, I mean, is this just a very small number of conferences that you guys are choosing to attend? It seems really low compared to some of the folks I talked to in neighboring towns. Go ahead.
Yes. We don't choose to go to a lot of conferences. I mean, they are extremely expensive. Normally, just to show up and be there is usually around seven-hundred-and-fifty to nine-hundred dollars. So we pick and choose what we go to. We take advantage of local things that we spend for out of here, but every once in a while, a PWX or a Snow and Ice Conference, or WEF Tech, or an AWWA Conference, WaterCon, those are important things for us to go to as well. So we kinda pick and choose, and kinda see what we can do cost-wise. And we, we also do a good job of finding, let's say, inexpensive places to stay versus always the top-level stuff, so we can save a little bit here and there. So maybe some people would go for a conference and spend three, four thousand dollars, and we can do it for two. Because we just, we work hard to make sure that we keep the cost down for the residents.
I can say that's, that seems extremely low, from what I've heard from other municipalities, so thank you.
Well, we'll take thirty thousand, and I'll be offered like six months, so don't worry about it.
Excellent. Next point.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments on, on that? Okay, let's move forward, please.
It's actually the Street Division? Yes. So, I know...
Talking about page seventy-eight. Alderman Eugene Wesley, do you have a question?
We have a Street Division?
Yeah, page seventy-eight. You know what, before we start on page seventy-eight, let's take a, if we could, can we take a quick five-minute break? Ten-minute break? Ten-minute breaks? All right. Lights, camera, cut. Go ahead. Ten minutes, we will reconvene at nine fifteen.